Sometimes I say the wrong thing. It's okay, life goes on. You were meeting at that point, so. I'm sure Bill will arrive in a minute or two.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, it's 7:01. Let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board. Let me remind everyone who will address the board to make sure the microphone is turned on at the table in front of me. Speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear you. And to sign in on the clipboard that's on the table so that we can record that for the minutes. Let me appoint Nelson into a voting position for Lynn. We have four members which constitutes a quorum. By way of announcement, our next meeting after tonight is August 6, 2019, at 7:00 PM in this room. That's all for the call to order. Let me announce that on our agenda, we're going to change the order of things and hear number five after the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report. Also, for anybody that's here to attend to item number four, the Hoyle Tanner Associates Proposal, that applicant has requested a continuance and it's likely the board would take that up.
They actually haven't specifically requested the continuance, that's the staff recommendation at this point.
Okay, staff's recommending a continuance, that item is likely to be continued, though. So, just so anybody can be aware of that. With that in mind, we've arrived at our Planning and Zoning Administrators Report. Tim, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your pack, if you find memo dated July 11th from me regarding the regional impact determinations for the OVP Management and Crosswoods Path III site plans. Staff recommends that the board determine these are not of regional impact as they do not meet the criteria.
Thank you, Tim. Is there any discussion by members of the board regarding this regional impact recommendation? If not, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation as outlined by Mr. Thompson and that neither of these two projects are of regional impact.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Boyd. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to find that they are not of regional impact. Tim, is there anything else for the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report?
Nothing this evening, no.
Any update on the interviewing and staff selection process?
The deadline for applications for the Assistant Planner Position closed on Friday. We did receive eighteen applications, we're in the midst of reviewing. Out of those eighteen, there's maybe a handful viable candidates. We're hoping to make a determination on two or three to interview out of those candidates, notifying them this week and then hopefully moving into interviews in the next week or so.
Excellent, good luck with the process and I look forward to the successful announcement of the next great terrific Assistant Planner. Other questions by members of the board for staff?
Just if you wanted to reintroduce Paul, what is he returns to the board after a brief absence?
Yeah, that's true, I think we announced it one time when you weren't here, but Paul, welcome back, glad to have you. Glad that your various situations in life have led you to be able to serve us again. It was great having you before and I'm sure it will be again. Thank you. If there's nothing further on the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report, let's take up item five from our agenda, which is Crosswoods Path III LLC as the applicant and DW Development LLC as the owner. It is reviewed for acceptance in consideration of final approval of a site plan to construct twenty-one multifamily residential and three office units. The parcels located at 747 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation and Planned Residential Development Overlay Districts, Tax Map 7E Lot 46-54. It is Case Planning Board 2019-23. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This should be familiar to the board, back in September of 2018, the applicant was before the board conceptually to discuss the conversion of this site, which was previously approved on two different occasions, once for a restaurant, once for three multi-tenant office buildings to be converted to a twenty-one unit multifamily project along with some office space of approximately fifteen hundred square feet. They did receive a variance from the zoning board back in February to allow that density for the twenty-one units. At this stage, however, it's staff's recommendation that we continue both the application acceptance and the public hearing out until August 20. The reason for that is twofold. The Planning and Zoning Administrator determined back last year that in order for this to move forward, there needs to be an amendment to the overall planned unit development for this project to allow for the conversion from non-residential to residential use on this property. There is well within the capacity of the PUD approval, which allowed up to four hundred residential units, so the number of units is not an issue from the PUD. It's simply a matter of correcting the record and making sure that it properly reflects that this is now going to be residential and not commercial space as was originally approved. Secondarily, given the level of review that we've done to this point, there are many issues that need to be resolved in terms of the engineering of the plan. The applicant's engineer has presented this as an amendment to that 2013 approval, which staff is not comfortable moving forward with. And this should be treated as a new application as that project never went anywhere, there's still a greenfield site. So, those are the reasons we're asking that the board continue the application to August 20. The other thing that I asked the board indulge me on is, as you know, on August 6, the board is slated to have our public hearing on creation of a brand-new set of site plan regulations. And if this project is not accepted as complete by the board before that is adopted, it could potentially impact the design that's been done to the project at this stage. So, I would ask the board to consider making a formal vote to allow this project to continue under the current regulations, given the level of engineering and investment that the applicant has already made into the project so that it wouldn't be necessary for the applicant to spend additional funds to redesign the project if necessary for the new regulations. So, my recommendation at this stage is to make a determination on the applicability of the new regulations and then to continue to August 20.
Thank you, Tim, for the explanation, very thorough and detailed, as always. Please introduce yourself for the record and tell us your view or a little bit about the application and your view of what Tim's recommending for us tonight.
Good evening, I'm Chris Bova, owner of One Crosswoods Path Boulevard, an applicant for 747 DW Highway. I'm in agreeance with everything. The only thing that I ask the board is that they allow us to bring the amendment on the 20th as well.
So, you want to bring a new application and an amendment at the same time, or?
The amendment to the PUD.
The amendment to the PUD and the new application.
And staff is fine with that.
Yeah, I wouldn't have any objections to that. Okay. Thank you for the introduction and the brief comment on the staff's recommendation. It seems to me, members of the board, the staff's recommendation makes plenty of sense. I can't find any fault with the logic behind it, but if there's discussion, let's have it.
Can I ask Tim a question?
Yes, please.
Did he say, did you say greenfields?
Greenfield.
Being a greenfield site, meaning it has yet not been developed at this stage.
Oh, okay.
In planning term, I should have clarified what that meant.
I'm just, I'm just the caveman. Thank you.
Nelson, what's your comment, your question?
I have a question for Tim regarding the recommendation regarding the new subdivision regulations, proposed subdivision.
Site plan regulations.
And the existing. And what is the impact of using one or the other of these two methods?
The reason I recommend that you allow, because the owner has developed this plan to this stage, invested, I'm sure, a substantial amount of money into the engineering of the project based on our current regulations. The new site plan regulations have additional and vastly different requirements in terms of landscaping and drainage, particularly drainage. We are comfortable, as is the Public Works Department, with this project to continue under the current regulations so that don't have to expend additional funds to redesign to meet the proposed regulations, which may or may not even be applicable to the project depending on when the regulations end up being adopted, but we just want to have something on record to make sure that they are protected from those changes. It's, I can't say in detail if, how much impact it would have, but I can say with some confidence that it would have an impact that would be a financial burden to the applicant.
Well, given the MS4 proposals and everything, does that put the town at risk of later having to go in and bring these drainage?
Not for a project of this size and the impact that it's proposed to have. Most of the site is going to be draining into existing drainage facilities that are within the Crosswoods Path program. So, Public Works is comfortable that this would not pose any issues from the MS4 standpoint.
That would be my only concern, is that putting the town at some risk in the future.
And that would be mine as well, but again, anything to this point, those regulations are still in effect.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? Bill?
A question for Tim. When they come, when the applicant comes back in August, will we have any opportunity to look at that particular intersection as it relates to traffic that's running north going southbound and southbound coming northbound? Because where that entrance egress is opposite, where nothing but good times is and AAA is located, that sightline, I personally find is difficult. And I'm wondering if potentially.
Only if the state DOT requires it. The reason I say that is there was a traffic impact analysis done on the 2013 office project which generates far more traffic than this would have proposed. And the state did not require improvements for that project.
Even with the.
Even with the greater level of traffic, they did not require any improvements for that project.
Can you share that analysis with me?
I can try to dig it out, yes.
I appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
Any questions? Other comments or questions? Okay, so the question before the board is first, the applicability of the current regulations to this proposal, which is the staff's recommendation. What's the will of the board on that question?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we follow the staff's recommendation and accept that this project maybe can proceed with the existing site plan regulations and will not have to meet the possible new site plan regulations.
Just to clarify, we currently do not have site plan regulations.
All right, yeah.
We have site plan chapters in our subdivision regulations.
All right. Thank you to clarify it, and I get that. Will you, will you accept what I, what Mr. Thompson said?
Yes, I'll accept that motion as one to find that the current regu, applicable regulations shall apply to this project going forward even should the board adopt future changes.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Boyd. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 for that. The remaining staff's recommendation is to continue both the finding that the application is complete as well as any public hearing on the application.
Move approval.
As a motion to, to continue to August 20. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Alistair.
At seven o'clock in this room.
No further notice to abutters.
With no further notice, yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to handle that business that way. Thank you very much, we'll look forward to seeing you in August.
Thank you, Tim.
5-0-0. 5-0-0. The next item on our agenda is what was originally scheduled as item number three. It is TNS, Real Estate Holdings LLC as the applicant and owner. Continued review for consideration of a site plan for modifications to the previously approved site plan regarding parking and buffers. The parcels located at 280 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation District, Tax Map 3D2 Lot 11, Case PB 2019-18. The item is continued from the June 4, 2019 Planning Board meeting. Tim, what do we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This project was again last heard in June. This is the site where Merrimack Firearms is located, at 280 Daniel Webster Highway. With the, just to refresh the board as to where this came from, there was a proposal for a change of use, one of the tenants in the building. And at that time, it became clear that there were encroachments onto a abutting property and other things that violated the original site plan approval on this site. So, the efforts of the applicant through this application have been to try to address those deficiencies from the original approval and bring the site back into compliance with the regulations. Robert's memo from July 10 summarizes where things have come from then. The key issue that I think the board, Kevin can explain the process between the meetings, but the one thing the staff would like to note is the parking. There is a parking waiver that's been considered. When this was originally before the board, the parking requirements were actually in the zoning ordinance. And at that time, in 1987, there was a variance granted by the zoning board to allow twenty-three parking spaces. That section is now part of our site subdivision regulations, soon-to-be site plan regulations. So, in order to clean up, because this variance now refers to a section of the ordinance that doesn't exist, we recommend that the board act on that waiver to kind of close the loop from a legal standpoint to ensure that this project is applying that waiver appropriately because of the variance granted back in eighty-seven. So, I'll turn it over to Kevin and I'll chime in if need be, if the board needs any further assistance.
Thank you, Tim, for the explanation. Kevin, although we know you, please introduce yourself for the record and.
For the record, Kevin Anderson with Meridian Land Services. Mr. Chairman, if I could approach the bench and just hand out the same plan that's before you.
Yes, please. Is that different than the one that we have in our package?
No, I'll explain that.
Okay.
I think. So, this is a continuation of the June 4 meeting. Meeting was continued so that allow me some time to address some outstanding items, add some notes to the plan, just basically clean up the plan. By and large, the focus of the discussion last month's meeting was the buffer. I had presented to the board a buffer that met the town's requirements to the rear of the property, but there was quite a bit of concern from the abutters, rightfully so. So, we went back to the drawing board and really tried to enhance the buffers to protect the condominium association to the rear and to the south or the left on this plan. Jumping right into it, the buffer to the rear, it consists of a two-foot berm with a six-foot privacy fence on top of it. Behind the privacy fence, we're proposing fourteen seven-to-eight-foot-tall arborvitae's which will reach mature heights of twelve to fourteen feet. This is in the area of the disturbance caused back there. What's new on the plan that I handed out to you was late last week, one of the engineers at my company met with some representatives of the condominium association and there was some agreement to allowing some plantings on the abutting property. What came to fruition was six white pines to the south or on the left of this plan, proposed at seven-to-eight feet tall, mature height of thirty-to-forty feet to try to reestablish that buffer. We believe this is a substantial change from what we had proposed last time and we're hopeful that this will address the abutters' concerns. A couple of items I want to close out. We have reviewed in detail the town files and at last meeting I had mentioned there was a sign in the front yard and some pavement that were encroaching in the front setbacks. We've identified variances that were obtained back in the eighties that take care of all of that, eighty-seven. I just wanted to make sure that the board knows that that's taken care of. Tim had alluded to the variance that was obtained for the parking. At the time, I believe the plan was in nineteen eighty-seven. Parking spaces required at that time were thirty-eight. A variance was obtained to reduce that to twenty-three. We're going to clean that up and because it's no longer in the zoning ordinance and now in the site plan regulations, current regulations require forty-eight spaces. We're requesting a waiver to reduce that to twenty-five. So, to clarify, we've gone from twenty-three from the original zoning variance to twenty-five. Back in eighty-seven, we had ten-foot-wide parking spaces. Sometime between then and now, they were restripped to eight feet wide. We gained a couple of parking spaces. What is important to note is I am delineating a ADA accessible space, which is not currently on the site. There is ADA accessibility, but it's striped out and there'll still be twenty-five spaces. Really, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the board for your comments and more importantly, to see if the abutters are satisfied with the current proposal we have before you.
Thank you, Kevin. Does the board have any comments or questions for the applicant? Nelson?
I have a question and that is with what appears to be a substantial reduction in the amount of parking available, can you still function these, can these three businesses still function there based on your experience so far?
So, what triggered this, this whole entire process was the applicant added parking spaces to the plan or to the, to the site. All new parking spaces have been removed, we're back to the original parking spaces from the nineteen eighty-seven quote-unquote plan. There is a gentleman agreement, if you will, between the VFW next door to utilize their parking. It's a written agreement, it doesn't have any teeth, it's not recorded, it's not easements, but there is a gentleman's agreement between the two organizations. They're off-peak organizations, the VFW uses parking spaces in the evening whereas my applicant throughout the day. There is an agreement between the two, but it's an established business, it's a business that's there from nineteen eighty-seven. They have to do with what they have. That's the answer.
Yeah, that was my concern, if you're going to be, well, you've got permission to trespass, I guess that's.
Correct.
There's no such thing as permission to trespass. When you get permission, it's no longer trespassing.
To elaborate on that real quickly, some additional notes from DPW, no parking on Smith Road, just to kind of clean this up and make sure that all parking is contained within the site.
Is there a note on the plan to that effect?
There is, yes, there is.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions by the board?
Mr. Chairman, as somebody who does actually use one of, who has in the past used one of the businesses that is on that site, I could show my colleagues that I have never felt, have never had a problem with parking and I've never not parked at the front. If that's any help.
I'm sure there's always a desire to have some additional parking where you can get it, but ultimately, it is what it is and it was developed in the eighties. Bill, you're reaching for a microphone?
Well, I was just echoing Alistair's comment that I too have frequented one of the businesses there between the hours of seven, eight o'clock, seven, eight-thirty, that, that particular period. And I've had no problem getting in parking. Doing my, doing my thing and walking out, so.
AM, PM?
PM.
PM. Thank you for the comment. Others, comments? So, according to the staff memo, we've already accepted this as complete. There are, there is a waiver request for the minimum parking to confirm the variance that was granted before. Before we take that up, let's open up the floor to hear from abutters and take in that testimony. You want to allow the table to be used by anyone that comes forward? Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to come forward? Please, come forward. Introduce yourself and sign in on the clipboard and then, once you're settled, tell us what's on your mind.
Michael Moy, Fifty Century Way. Just going to go through these slides really fast, I think everybody else.
Can you make sure your microphone is on, please? There should have a nice green light and make certain you can speak into it fairly closely so all those folks can hear.
Okay. Just going to go through the slides quickly. This is the view of the trees at the southern border, it's slide three from August 2011. You can see the branches reach out over twenty feet into the parking lot and you can count at least eight conifers, the height of the trees is well above the roof of the building. Next. The southern border in June 2019, the eighteen conifers are gone and there's a big hole. Slide five, the view of the border from Country Crossing. The lower plants provide an effective buffer for the lower half of the building, but we're missing the conifers that provided the buffer for the upper half of the building. Slide six.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh.
Slow down a little bit, okay.
Slow down and speak louder, please.
Go back one slide, I want, I want to make sure I understood the point you're making on the previous slide.
This is, you want me to start over again?
No, well, you can start over if you choose to, but I was really, you lost me on that slide. That one I understood, but go ahead, start where you think it's appropriate.
Slide three, this is the view of the trees from August 2011. As you can see, the branches reach out twenty to thirty feet from the trunk and the trees are higher than the building substantially. Next. This is the southern border in June 2019. As you can see, there's a big hole in the middle where the eight conifers were removed. Slide five, this is the view for the border from Country Crossing and you can see the, the conifers filled that hole, so now you can see the upper half of the building. But the lower, the lower brush provides an effective buffer. Slide six. A view of the southern border from another angle, you can see the hole as well. Slide seven. This is the western border as viewed, sorry, so I'm going from the southern border now to the western border. This is a view of, from Country Crossing from July 2013. You can see a few specks of the roof through the trees, but otherwise, you can't see their building. We've determined that there was about twenty feet of buffer on our part of the property and the twenty feet of buffer on their part of the property, which is why you couldn't see cars or anything, you couldn't hear and you didn't have any exhaust issues. Also, in the middle, this is an old picture, notice that there are no stones there. That's just something for a bit later. Next. This is the view from Country Crossing in May 2018, just after the work was done. These are dramatic pictures. Obviously, you can see the whole building and all of the trees on the left half are on Country Crossing property. So, it means that there was brush forward of that removed as well as the twenty feet as well as the, the trees from that tree line to the property line. Next. This is a view of the trees behind the building from August 2011. Note the height of the trees with respect to the, the top of the street lamp on the right. Next. And this is the same view in 2019. The comparison between the top of the streetlight and the top of the trees, the top of the trees are a lot lower. Slide 11. Skip that, slide 12. Mr. Disco asked about the catchment basins and riprap. This is the northwest drainage structure. My understanding is there's a concrete slab underneath this, a drain cover, and the rocks are the riprap. Also note, the ground to the left and the right of the drainage structure are higher. Next. This is a close-up of the riprap next to the pavement. This, the pavement, the end of the pavement is actually at the borderline. Next. So, this, this vehicle is parked there, so this vehicle is actually on our property. Notice again the difference, you see that tree? There's about a, somewhere between two and three feet of height difference between the catchment basin and the surrounding ground. Next. View of the northwest drainage struc, drainage structure from Country Crossing. In the past, we couldn't see anything here. Next. The southwest drainage structure, notice the rocks in the background, those are on Country Crossing property. Also note that the drainage structure is probably one to two feet lower than the left and right part of it. Next. Southwest drainage structure showing the drain grate, sorry, no. Oh, parking lot showing the breaks. This is why the headlights could shine into our buildings. Next. This is the southwest drainage area, again with the riprap, the drainage structure and the drain grate. Next. The view of the rear parking lot. You can see holes on the right side and on the left side. In the past, we couldn't really see into it, but if you look at the, the dried leaves, that, that was our property and we believe the trees were removed, trees and brush were removed from that property. Next. This is panning to the west view of their parking lot, there are a lot of holes in there again. Next. Another view of the parking lot, you can't see as many holes through here because of the angle. Next. This is the northwest corner. The corner of their parking lot is on our property and it moves about five feet to the other corner on the southwest side. All of that area with the dried leaves is our property and as you can see, the trees were removed from there. Next. This is the area next to the propane tank on the southwest corner. The property line includes this little left-hand corner here. I, I'm not sure if that's buffered. Next. Next. Okay, this is a picture from this, shot from the southwest corner in August 11th. Next. And this is that picture today. So, you can see the drainage structure, but in the past, the drainage structure was completely covered by trees. The July 20th memo from Robert Price to the chairman discussed the rear buffer, side buffer, and drainage as pertaining to Country Crossing. The proposal from Meridian for the rear buffer had the removal of pavement and a line of arborvitae planted in the eastern part of the buffer with a fence east of the arborvitae. This would meet the buffer requirements. I think it's type C, or C-type one or one-type C. About twenty feet of trees and foliage were removed from Country Crossing, on Country Crossing's property of the western buffer, and we would like these restored. We would not need the proposed fence. I think the trees would do a good enough job. On the southerly, on the southern buffer, the proposal seems to be fine. The, the memo from planning staff had a question about the south buffer and getting that resolved, and you couldn't really fit a type, the type C, the C-type-one buffer in there, because it would just take up too much space from the driveway. So, what we had before is fine. You know, if they put up those trees there on our property, that would be fine. On drainage, the memo states, "The applicant's removal of the additional impervious surface to the rear of the site further improves the site's drainage and ultimately restores it back to the previously existing condition. As such, no additional drainage accommodation or calculation is required." This states that the removal of the drainage structure brings it back to the previous condition, and we disagree. We, we believe...
To clarify, that means that because they're removing the pavement, there's less impervious surface that needs to be accommodated by drainage. It's not the removal of the structure. It's the removal of pavement. That is why the reduction is, the calculation is no longer needed.
Okay. The point that I'd like to make is that we would request that the berm be restored. They put a trench in to put the drainage structure in so the water would flow through it. We would like that berm restored so that it's the same height, and then we would like trees and shrubs as, similar to what we had before. This is on our property. We are fine with his proposal on their property, but we would like the foliage and trees restored to our property. I asked you to note, there are three areas of rocks in our property. There's a detainment trench, a bunch of rocks on the northeast, northwest corner, and the southwest corner. After they did their work, we had some street flooding, and we had, our detainment trench filled, it ponded, so water came into it, and it built up. And we really haven't had that before. We had this, the second half of last year and the first half of this year. So, Country Crossing put those drainage struc, they added drainage structures. They put those rocks in, in the northwest corner, the southwest corner, in the middle of the trench, and made, made some modifications to the concrete drainage structure. So, we had, it was heavy equipment. We, so we incurred some expense, excuse me, with dealing with the additional drainage. So, what, so the problems we have are the berm, the trees and foliage that were on the drainage structure, and the trees and the foliage that were in between the two drainage structures. And so, we like the plan presented by Mr. Anderson. We would just like the addition, additional restoration on our side of the west buffer. The proposal by Meridian gets us partway with restoration, and hopefully, this will help, and the rest is up to time.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm just writing notes. I don't mean, I'm not distracted. I was writing down what you were suggesting. Thank you for the photographs and for walking us through. It's very, very helpful to be able to see firsthand what it looked like before and after, and I'm actually quite impressed that you have, it's hard, always hard to find the before pictures, because nobody ever thought to take pictures before something happened, but very, very clear presentation. Thank you for that. The only question that I have about the testimony that you provided is whether you're offering that individually, or do you speak on behalf of the condo association that operates Crosswoods Path?
Our Board of Directors' president is here. He's going to speak after I do.
Excellent. Perfect. I just wanted to understand who you're here for. Other members of the board that have questions?
No.
Nope.
Pretty clear. Thank you.
Thank you for the...
If I could, a comment.
Yes, please.
A comment. I appreciate what Mr. Moy has done, and I appreciate the testimony that he provided in our packet and amplifying it here tonight, so I do want to thank him for that. The concern that I've raised is that he's addressing issues that impact his particular property that, from where I sit, I don't feel is germane directly to the, to the project at hand. Now, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we should be focusing on, on 3D dash two slash 11. And I think if there was any issues regarding encroachment that occurred on Country Crossing's condo is something that's, that's not, from where I sit, I don't feel is our jurisdiction, and really should be an offline conversation between, between the Condomentum Association and the applicant, and the applicant. That's just from where I sit, and I defer to your judgment, Mr. Chairman.
There's certainly merit to what you're suggesting, in that normally, a intrusion across a property line is a private matter between the two owners of the property to sort out between them. In some cases, and this is one of them, at least in some parts, it does become part of a planning board review, because we're asked to approve a structure that either is or isn't completely on the property correctly. And the corrections that Mr. Anderson has proposed brings this back within the boundaries of the property, for the most part, although the white pines to the south are planted on Crosswoods Path by some form of agreement with them, and...
Not Crosswoods Path.
I'm sorry, not Crosswoods Path.
Country Crossing.
Country Crossing. I'm sorry for getting them confused. And so, to some extent, there's some agreement, underlying agreement that is represented on the plan before us that involves the two properties together. Normally, though, no, we don't get into arbitrating a dispute between neighbors as to an encroachment. Other comments for this particular witness? Thank you so much for your testimony, for providing it very clear, very helpful. Who Take a moment to sit down and sign in on the clipboard, and when you're ready, introduce yourself for the record, and then tell us what's on your mind.
I think, Bill, your comment before is how we ended up having several conversations about this one, that we couldn't have approved the plan as it sat with the connection with the VFW and the trees to the side, because it had those intrusions.
Correct.
Hi, my name is Jim Cobb, and I'm the president of the Country Crossing Association condo board. And I think Michael Moy did a great job of explaining the situation, and he was representing the thoughts of the community at large. We've met a couple of times. Some of the community members outside, excuse me, we've also met with Steve Susie. So, we've walked the property, and we've discussed the issues, and I do think some of the issues do impact the community of Merrimack at large, and are a matter for the planning board to consider, particularly the berm that Mr. Moy spoke of. I think it was part of the original plan to withhold the water from Mr. Susie's site, from emptying into the containment pond. A different plan, and so that's one of the concerns of the association at large, and I know I speak for the rest of the, the board, the Country Crossing board, but also for the, the community members. They've all seen the water, the additional water in some of our heavy downpours of the last year fill the containment pond that we hadn't seen in, in the past. So, that's one thing that we are looking to have remedied in addition to the other pieces. As to the, the trees and the brush on top of that berm, that is part of our property, and that would be a matter for you folks to make the decision. But at least pulling the, the sumps out, removing the riprap, and then replacing that berm to bring their site plan back to the way it was developed originally and approved originally, I think is very important, so that, you know, we don't see problems with our catchment pond, our retainment pond. But other than that, we have met, we have met as a group, neighbors. We've looked over this plan. We like what we see. Michael Moy has done a nice job of expressing the concerns of the community as a whole. And is there, are there any questions that I might be able to ask?
Quick ones. You, you mentioned the berm being on your property. Actually, Mr. Anderson's plan, which we got this evening, shows that the berm is on their property.
This is the new proposed?
Yes.
There, there's a berm that they're proposing, where they're gonna put an additional fence on top of?
Yep.
As part of their barrier. That is on their property, but the berm that I'm speaking of, I think it follows the, the property line, and it, you can see that there's, from Mr. Moy's pictures, there's two cuts to a berm that was built at the back of their property, or actually, it was on our property, because it was part of our retention pond plan to keep the water from their property filling into our retention pond. We couldn't handle all the water from our property and their property. There's also another property, or another pond, I think, to the, next to the VFW, that was all built to take the water from Country Crossing and deal with it effectively. So, when they cut the two approaches for those drainage, in order for that to work, for the water to flow into the catch basins that they put on our property, they had to cut two swales through that berm in order to, for the water to access, move it towards our retention pond.
But the plan that we were presented this evening shows two catch basins and riprap to be removed, loamed and seeded. So, in other words, now that the berm is on the opposite, the TS Holding site?
Yep.
And you've lost the catch basin and ripraps, I would have thought, in my ignorance, that the wa, no water's gonna come onto your property.
It looks like that, that berm that they're proposing, it doesn't go the full length of the property. The, the berm that existed previously, it went from corner to corner.
Okay.
And then, when they put in those two catch basins, they put cuts.
I understand that.
Through that, and, and I think...
But if they've taken those out?
Yes.
Surely, that's gonna be ninety-eight, ninety percent of your issue. You're possibly suggesting the berm should be stretched a little bit further. Is that what you're suggesting?
I think, let me see if I can help you out a little bit.
Sure.
This is one of the photographs that was gone through in the, in the view, and it's the northwest drainage structure, June of 2019, and you can see a gravel path through the middle there with a drainage, catch basin in the middle.
Yes.
So, you look to the sides of the photograph, you see that the natural elevation is at least a foot, foot and a half higher on both sides of that cut-through.
Right.
And so, what they're looking for is to see that, when it's loamed and seeded, filled to that level.
Right. Because I would say that that's probably not natural. That was built there as part of that whole retention pond plan, and if you start, you know, impinging upon it, then you reduce the effectiveness of that whole engineered structure, and we'd like to see it, you know.
This is the other drainage structure, the southeast one, and essentially, you have the same...
Same issue.
Now, as we try to work through that with the applicant on the planning, as a planning board, we've got some limitations that are kind of captured in what my colleague's comment was, in that we can require the applicant to control his drainage. We don't necessarily have the ability to tell the applicant to control his drainage with a structure on your property.
Right.
And if he satisfactorily controlled his drainage on his own property with a structure, that's about as far as our jurisdiction goes.
Okay.
Now, privately, if you guys want to have an agreement to do it that way, or continue the controversy to have a debate about doing that that way, that's outside of our, our world.
Okay.
Certainly, if the agreement was that the drainage would be controlled by continuing these berms on your property, the applicant wanted to do it that way and was proposing it, we certainly could accept that as being a proposal between the two together, but we can't require it of the applicant since it's not on his property.
Okay, so then, our understanding is that, based on this plan, that you're ensuring, or not ensuring, maybe the wrong word, but your understanding is that the water won't be filling into our...
So, yeah, always ensuring and guaranteeing are all these kind of cautious words, but we're required, as part of our regulations, to evaluate whether the applicant is going to run water off of his property onto somebody else's, or whether he's got adequate drainage, drainage structures to prevent that.
Based, based on the information submitted by the applicant, there's a point-two cubit foot per second decrease in the amount of drainage leaving the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment, though. I, I appreciate that. I want to make sure I understand, from the association's standpoint, whether you're satisfied with the applicant's proposing, or whether you still have some concerns about it. And I heard that you're satisfied with parts of it, but maybe not all of it. Is that right? Is that correct?
That, that is correct, but hearing the purview of the planning board, that gives us a little bit more understanding of what can be done in this venue, and then what may have, happen in, in other venues. I know we were concerned about drainage. It seems to be addressed now. I'd have to go back to the full board and, and talk this out, but drainage is, is a major concern. Also, providing an adequate buffer. I know that we were concerned that trees were taken down from our property, but we understand that Merrimack's responsibility lies within, you know, the site plan that's being developed for their property. And so, I think we are happy with what we're seeing here, because it, it starts to make things whole again, but we may have to look at other means in order to bring us back to where we were.
I wouldn't be surprised if a discussion with the applicant would satisfy you on the berms, because it's really, really cheap to put a little bit of dirt there and...
That's what I'm thinking. Yeah.
And I, I wouldn't be surprised if the applicant would be willing to do that, but it's just not within our jurisdiction to tell him to?
Right.
If he's already got his drainage dealt with.
Right, right. No, and they've been great working with us. Both Mr. Susie, Meridian has sent people, have listened to neighbors, and so I, I think we have a good working relationship, and I don't think that it will be too difficult to bring things back. I like the fact that we are here. What I'm hearing and what I think the neighbors are hearing i, is positive, and I haven't heard any negative from anybody fearing like, oh, we're not gonna be made whole again.
Thank you for saying that. I'm sure the applicant appreciates it as well. I know that my approach is always to encourage people to go be neighborly, if they can, and figure out a way to do it, and sometimes that is a very difficult thing to do, because by the time year before us, and I'm saying, go be neighborly, then some bridges have been burned, and it's tough to rebuild those relationships. And if there's been a little bit of success on that with this one, I'm happy to hear that from you guys, and, and that you're receptive to it. So, thank you for saying so. Does anyone else have any questions of Jim?
Okay.
No? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For your testimony. Other members of the public who wish to weigh in on the proposal? Okay, I'm seeing none. Are you sure? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and invite the applicant back up to respond to the testimony that was provided, or have any other discussion necessary regarding the application.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just while Kevin's getting himself back set up, assuming that Kevin is okay with the discussion we've had to this point, I'm gonna recommend that the...
I think that makes sense. Kevin, do you have comments on, or are you still getting plugged in?
I think it's gonna pop up here in a minute. I think I have positive responses for all of the comments. I think you turned it off. I think you turned it off.
Looks like it's coming on. Just takes it a second. Everybody else always wonders what I'm staring at, but there's one right there, too, for anybody.
I'll just go anyways.
It's green.
It's working green.
Yeah.
It's warming up.
I thought I knew what I was doing.
I was going to say we shut it back off sometimes, it just messes everything.
I don't think I turned it back off, I think.
Yeah.
Went into a power surge check.
Anyway, we have it back here.
Are you plugged in again? Yeah.
Unplug and plug in again?
No, no, it's, it's just, it's just the projector.
So, I'll just go into it if it comes up, it does. There was some concern voiced about the two drainage structures and the rip rap. Both of those are proposed to be removed. What is noted on the plan as intermittent contour because it doesn't fall on an even foot contour, hopefully you can see this, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is actually depicting this whole area, that berm to be filled in. We were proposing to fill the berms in to establish them to where they were before.
So you were going to do exactly, go ahead.
What we were not doing was proposing any additional plantings on the abutting property. We felt that what we're proposing with this wall of arborites and the fence was very substantial. It kind of emulated what was there before with the lower brush. I would actually wager a little bit more being as dense with the fence. We didn't want to add any more plantings on the abutting property. Other comments that were, were noted, I was not privy to any information or the trees that were there prior to cutting. To my knowledge, no trees were cut on the abutting property, certainly not twenty feet of trees, as that would be well into the basin, but either way, we're not looking at planting any additional plantings on the abutting property, but just establishing a solid butter on our, a solid buffer on our property. Street flooding, I can assure you that the way the site is graded, and especially because we've removed all of that new pavement, it's back to existing conditions and it actually flows towards the building and around the building. It will not be flowing onto the abutting property, especially now that we're adding that berm to it. Couple mentions to the berm, again, the berm's being reestablished again. I think that's pretty much, takes care of everything. We're, we're trying to bring it back to existing conditions minus any of that lower brush that was removed when the cutting of the catch basin and rip rap and swales were.
And just for clarification, when you say existing conditions, meaning the approved plan?
Correct, Tim, thank you for correcting me. So again, this dashed line right here is, is a contour, an intermittent contour, it doesn't fall on an even foot. We are actually proposing to fill that ditch in here, also in this location here, to bring it back up to grade to where it was before.
Thank you for that. Comments or questions for?
Sounds like what the, the butter was asking for.
Excellent.
So we do have the waiver for parking to deal with?
Yep. Let's, let's take up that question. Certainly this seems to be simply a matter, to me, simply a matter of kind of making the record catch up to some previous approvals that have been granted and whether we would have the same wisdom as whoever in 1987 granted a variance, it is what it is. It's been granted, they have a variance at 23, they have, they could legally continue that without the benefit of us granting a waiver.
And they're actually going up to 25, so they're providing more than that variance had allowed them.
Plus the handicap space and all this does is make sure that the continuance of that right is reflected on modern plans going forward and that there's no effort, I'm sure it's intensely complicated to go back and dig through 1987 plans to figure out, oh my goodness, here's a variance. And I saw one from 95 for the sign in the front and that is, and I'm glad to see that the current plan actually has the note that says the variance is on it now, so you don't have to go back and redo that research. That's the, exactly the correct way to bring these things forward and make sure that they don't have to go back and dig through dusty old moldy files from forty years ago to figure it out. With that in mind, what's the will of the board with respect to the parking waiver request to allow 25 parking where 43?
Eight.
Forty-eight would be required?
Go ahead, Alistair.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we effectively grant a waiver to allow the parking to be of 25 spaces instead of the 48 that, that the plan as constructed would require.
Seconded.
Motion properly seconded to grant the waiver, discussion, justification?
Sorry, that.
Specific circumstances?
Specific circumstances relative to the subdivision indicate the waiver will carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Might want to call it a site plan, but that's okay.
Robbie?
Nelson?
Just let the minutes of this meeting show that the applicant testified that he had an agreement or permission to overflow onto the adjacent property if needed, or something to that effect.
Overflow parking, not overflow water?
Overflow parking, oh yes, no, not water, water, no, no, no. Just the parking.
Yes. A gentleman's agreement with the VFW, I think that that's an appropriate attachment for the waiver.
Should be in the minutes somewhere.
Any other comments on the parking waiver? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero to grant the parking waiver. It's now appropriate for the board to consider what its will is with respect to final approval of the plan that's before us.
So question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
At the last meeting, we had at least one or two of us testify regarding the noise as it relates to deliveries that were occurring on that particular site. In looking at the, the recommendations provided by staff, I'm noticing that there is no, for lack of a better word, hours of operation for deliveries to occur on that particular site. Are we satisfied that the buffer that's being proposed on the Westley side is going to mute?
From, from my perspective, because they're proposing arborite, which is among the thickest evergreen screening plantings you can provide, I'm satisfied that that should have helped with the noise issue.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it will help with the noise issue, although it's still something the board may consider if we wanted to have the applicant limit its delivery hours. I'm not necessarily concerned about his hours of operation.
Well, that's what I meant, the delivery hours, I apologize. But yeah, the delivery hours is what I was.
Or dumpster changing hours, if there's a dumpster on site. Kevin, do you have any feedback or input from the applicant as to how that would affect their business operations to have that approach?
Rather complicated to start hours of operations first. It's complicated because this is a tenant fit up space and tenants change. Alistair, I believe you mentioned last meeting that the hairdresser was leaving, a new hairdresser's going in, less chairs, but it seems to be even swapped. There's a pizza place there, I, I don't, I couldn't tell you what it's going to be. All I can tell you is that they have to fit within the requirements of parking. Hours of operation is kind of touchy when it comes to an entity like this because of the different tenants involved in it. As far as dumpsters and deliveries, it, it varies with the tenants. It's a very slippery slope to go down if we start curbing hours, but I mean, if the board feels that.
Particularly when the original site plan didn't include any restrictions?
No, it didn't include any restrictions, although we've got to be satisfied that the applicant's done his best to restore the situation and he certainly affected the noise and light level based on the, the things that have been done.
The reason why I asked the question, Mr. Chairman, is that in, in Mr. Moy's presentation, as it relates to the proposed plan that's been presented by the applicant through Meridian, I'm functioning under the premise that there are three dumpsters on the property currently, where they're reducing down to two.
I don't know how many dumpsters.
I think there's only one, isn't there?
There are.
There's two.
Okay, because you've got, based on the, the photo that Mr. Moy presi, presented, there's a dumpster that's on the northerly side of the property, or the northeasterly side of the property, and another dumpster down on the south westerly side of the property.
Could I ask what date of that photo you're looking at?
It was June nineteen, June of 2019.
Which one you're looking at? Because one of the dumpsters from, from the condo is actually in the photo.
Slide 21, West Parking Lot, June of 2019. Because there's, there's, there's the propane tank right down there. Based on what, what's being presented on the plan, the propane tank is on the south westerly side. So now I'm looking at a dumpster that's not reflected here and it doesn't necessarily have to be, but I'm functioning under the premise that there's three dumpsters on the property and I haven't been there in, in a couple of months now.
Based on the way that dumpster's facing, could that be the dumpster for the VFW?
Could be, but, so then are we talking, are we talking encroachment now?
I don't know.
I don't know. Okay. If, if we accept that it's the VFWs, then I'm fine.
I think that it could be. It sort of looks like to me the way it's facing.
It's a fair, it's a fair point, Mr. Chairman.
However, I'm still, I still want to be satisfied that the condo association is getting adequate protection from noise and idling vehicles and I know that that's a very difficult thing for the applicant to police on a day-to-day basis. However, we can at least suggest that the applicant put up a sign that says no idling and, no truck engines and no backup alarms between certain hours.
The other thing to consider is, is that the parking spaces where cars would have been idling are no, are removed from the property in those locations.
Yeah. I, you know, I wasn't worried about car spaces, it's really trucks that are left idling. You know, as, as somebody that delivers the, you know, the food for the pizza place or whatever else gets delivered there, and I'm not sure how frequently that's going to happen, but the applicant, the neighbors certainly testified that they're able to hear the trucks come and go now and dumpsters certainly involve trucks. I, to me, it's a very simple thing for the planning board to require the applicant to put up a sign that says no, no engine idling, no backup alarms between the hours of whatever and whatever. What's the will of the board? Is that something anybody's interested in or am I out in the end of the plank on my own?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm with you, Mr. Chairman, I just, I, Mr. Anderson's, his point is well taken, that if, if you, if you put it, the hours of operation was, was a total slip of the tongue on my part and I apologize for misleading anybody. It's, it's the delivery piece that I'm focusing on and I think if, if they're doing deliveries before 8:00 AM on a Saturday or Sunday morning, I think that's slightly unreasonable. Not saying that deliveries would occur on a Saturday or Sunday morning before 8:00 AM, I just, there's an expectation, I think people would like to sleep in on those, on those particular days. On, on the normal course of business from Monday through Friday, to me, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM doesn't seem unreasonable because people are generally up, up and functioning during those particular hours of the day. So that's where.
I think that when we've done this in the past, and one, one example that I know of is the, the South Shaw's Plaza where Sweet Ginger and those guys are, have a limitation that says no dumpster pickups and backup alarms before 7:00 AM, I think is the timeframe that's on those. I think when we also heard Mr. Monahan's proposal for the lower portion of the outlet mall, we talked about putting the same kinds of requirements on them about their dumpster deliveries and backup alarms. So it's not uncommon for us to do this. We don't tend to go late into the morning and say, you know, 11:00 AM. It's usually 7:00 AM, 8:00 AM, not extraordinarily burdensome. I mean, if you're getting your dumpster emptied at 5:00 AM, you know, talk to the company, have that fixed. It's, it's not unusual for, I'm sure that when the condo association, as well as other apartments around town, empty their dumpsters, they don't do it at 5:00 AM.
I mean, looking at what Meridian has put together, you got, you got two dumpster pads on the southerly side of the property and you got a propane tank. It means Energy North is going to be making a delivery quarter, on a quarterly basis at a, at a minimum. So that, that alone is, you know, you're going to have three trucks at some particular point, at some particular point during the day where they're going to be doing what they need to do to allow the three retail spaces to be able to operate and function.
Yep. And I think it's not a great burden to tell, to have those dumpsters and, and if it's only quarterly or on the propane and monthly or bi-weekly on the dumpsters, to do that in business hours. I don't think it's particularly burdensome.
Business hours for deliveries?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that you would get propane delivered out, outside of business hours. I think it probably already is within, and I don't know what other deliveries are for the truck, but again, I don't think that the applicant nor the town's going to be out there with a stopwatch, seeing if somebody shows up a few minutes early, put up a sign and expect that people act reasonably is probably about the extent of how this is going to play out.
Adding a note to the plan that deliveries shall only take place during normal business hours.
That's fine, that's perfect. Thank you.
That satisfies me. Thank you for raising the point. We also discussed adding a different note to the, to the plan tonight. What was the, I'm sorry.
All right, I'd like to make a clarification or, or a request. The restaurant gets deliveries before hours of operation. That's going to kind of complicate this additional note that you're requesting.
Okay, I'm, normal business hours isn't necessarily to me, business to business changing, you know, the restaurant opens at 11.
From an enforcement standpoint, from my perspective, it would basically be eight to 5:00 PM.
Yes, that's what I was thinking in normal business hours, definition of normal business hours.
Eight AM to 5:00 PM.
I know they do get them from, they do get them before 8:00 AM. I mean, I'd be happy to, there's probably one truck that comes for the restaurant before then. Be happy to put up a sign right on the side of the fence where the propane thing is and just tell them to shut off their truck. It's going to think that would leave you at the problem. I have no problem contacting them and putting up a sign.
Yep. So let me do two things. First, you got to be on a microphone so folks can hear you talk and introduce yourself. Thank you, thank you for the suggestion and the ability to kind of work through this problem. I want to make sure that we're not unreasonably limiting the, the tenants and the business.
My name is Steve Sucey, I'm the owner of said property. So, the restaurant does take deliveries earlier on the day. As far as, as far as the dumpsters go, they happen like once a week for one of the dumpsters. The other dumpster is every other week, the one for the cardboard, happens during the middle of day, they never come before. I've never seen them there before, like nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, they're always there during my business hours.
Excellent.
I have no problem putting up a sign, telling them to shut down, you know, their trucks so that they're not bothering the neighbors.
No engine idling.
I think there's sufficient buffer on the south end as far as headlights coming around and that would only be really winter hours, I think, where you would see the headlights. But if they shut their vehicles off, then that shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, I think the fence that you're putting up along the back border covers a lot of the headlight issues, at least in that direction as well. So how early does the restaurant receive deliveries?
I, you know, sometimes I'm, I'm there early in the morning. I'd seen them there 7:00, 7:30. It's possible they come, I'm not there before then, so it's possible they come earlier too. They have key access where they can go in, fill up the, the freezers or refrigerators, drop off their product, so he can, you know, Pizza Roma can do their business.
All right. I, I certainly appreciate the, the notion of a sign that says, you know, no, no engine idling. The backup alarms on trucks are also part of the concern for me because much louder, I mean, it's intended to be heard, it's supposed to warn you that trucks backing up.
Yeah, I don't think there'd be much backing up over there, it's not, there wasn't much room before I made the adjustment a lot and bring it back to where it was, there, there won't be too much backing up happening over there. And I've actually painted arrows to go around the building to make a loop versus trying to get people to back up and it's not, it doesn't work for them to deliver to try to back around the building.
That actually is good information to have, thank you for that.
It's a dangerous situation if they tried to back around to get to his back door. So they definitely go around.
Yeah. Okay, so you got a circulation pattern with stripes and paint on the, on the ground that says go this way, don't back up?
Exactly.
Okay, that helps. Then I would be satisfied with a sign that says no engine idling.
An incident, Mr. Chairman, commercial vehicles are required by state and federal laws to have backup alarms and you can't turn them off.
No, you can't, but you can arrange your, your delivery so you don't go backwards.
Yeah.
Don't go backwards.
I just want to address also Mr. Boyd's concern about the third dumpster. That picture is actually taken from the VFW parking lot, that's on their parking, that's on their property.
Thank you.
So there's nothing, there's no encroachment on, it's not shown in the picture there, but it's, that's theirs, not ours. So just so you're aware of that one.
Thank you, thank you for offering that feedback. I think that we're all set with that notion and that concept. There was.
So the three things I have that were not currently in the memo are the buffer agreement to be noted, copies provided, note regarding deliveries during quote, "normal business hours" and then a sign added to ensure no engine idling.
Something in my head's telling me we talked about another one, but I don't remember what it was. Any other comments or questions by members of the board? If not with those modified conditions, is the board ready to take any action?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the changes to the site grant, modifications plan as presented today and with the additional notes added to the memo of, that was coming from Mr. Robert Price today. Mr. Robert Price dated July 10, 2019, and therefore we should accept this for final approval.
Is there a second for Alister's motion?
Second.
Second by Bill. Nelson, you look like you have a question or comment.
Okay, well, I was going to second, and then one comment, I think the thing you might be thinking of was that he would revise the plan to show the berm continuing across the whole backside.
Or filling in that area.
Filling in the gaps in the berm.
It is noted on the plan, it is to be filled in. This dash line is depicting the continuation of a contour, indicating this area is to be filled in on both of them. For the record, both of those will be filled in. If you want me to amend the final plan, I can, but for the record, both of those swales will be filled in.
Okay, I guess I missed it. I thought it was not shown very clearly there, and that needed some clarification, but if you say it's on there, I'm okay with that.
Thank you for that. Before we vote, Kevin, what's the timeline for making the plantings and removing the paving and doing all of that stuff?
I believe the pavement's already been removed by and large, except to the rear of the property.
Correct, on the southern portion of the property, that's already been removed. It, I guess it depends on how quickly, I want to say, I can get contractors in to come and do it.
So weeks, not months?
I would say 30, 45 days. It's unfortunately not my schedule.
Once we have final plans first.
I'm going to do, I'm going to, right, you've got to buy the plans. I've got to get somebody to come in there. First thing is, you can't just shovel that hot top up that's in there, right? So it takes equipment, and people's schedules really are going to make happen, so...
Yeah, I understand, and I'm not trying to put you in a bind, I just, since this comes to us as an approval of a plan that's out of compliance, bring it back into compliance. Normally with a site plan, you can come in and get approval, but decide whether you intend to actually execute the plan or not.
I do. I do.
This is one that if it's not executed, would result in enforcement action.
Yeah, excellent, thank you. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion for conditional final approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Let me get organized again. Let's give everybody a minute to clear the room and the new folks to set up before we move on to the next item. Otherwise, we'll be juggling with not being able to hear much.
Ladies and gentlemen, we do have other business to discuss, so if you're leaving, leave, please.
Please carry the conversations out into the hallway.
Are you trying to turn it on or turn it off? Well, we like the blue picture.
It just takes a second. All right, we're ready again. Item number four on our agenda is Hoyle Tanner and Associates, Inc. as the applicant and OVP Management, Inc. as the owner. Continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct 40 multifamily residential units. The parcel is located at 360 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial, Aquifer Conservation, Elderly Housing, and Planned Residential Development Overlay Districts, Tax Map 43, Lot 1, Case Planning Board 2019-22. This item is continued from the July 2, 2019 Planning Board meeting. As has been my pattern in the past, on this particular project, I recuse myself from consideration of it as there's a conflict. And turn over the gavel to our esteemed vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Best. Good evening, gentlemen. Perhaps you would like to just announce who you are, and we'll see what...
Or you could start with me. Or you could start with me.
Well, we could start with you. Yeah, well, I think perhaps we should, because in fact, if I remember what you've told me already, there's a fundamental issue. Perhaps you could, A, do the introduction, B, explain the fundamental issue.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. In your packet, you'll find a memo from Robert dated July 11. This project, as you know, is proposing 40 multifamily units behind the existing redeveloped retail plaza. With, trying to make a long story short, this site, in our research, was found to not be officially approved as part of a PUD in the past, and if the applicant were to move forward with processing this application as a PUD, the commercial uses allowed in a PUD would render several of the uses in the redeveloped plaza as non-conforming, which means that anytime anything changed in there, we'd need to go to the zoning board for variances, which could severely complicate the administration of the non-residential portion of the site. Robert has made a suggestion, and then as I understand it, the applicant is willing to go this direction, that the simpler method to try to address this would be to go to the zoning board for a special exception to allow the residential use in the commercial district, and then a variance to allow for the density that is proposed at 40 units. We also note that if this does go forward as a PUD, the density allowed would be far greater than what the applicant is proposing to look for with the 40 units. So the limitation could be made by the zoning board, if they're successful with the variance, to limit the site to the 40 units that are proposed. Having said all of that, obviously, given those two factors, needing to go to the zoning board, and the fact that we do not have final peer review comments ready for this project, we're going to recommend that the board vote to continue this application to August 20th, so that the applicant can go obtain those zoning relief as necessary and address the issues in the staff review. We do find that there is sufficient information from our perspective to accept the application as complete. Should the board, however, determine that it is not ready to be accepted as complete, I'd ask the same question that I had with the initial project this morning, this morning, it seems like it's been that long, at the beginning of the meeting, for the Crosswoods Path, that the board make a determination on the applicability of the potential new regulations. However, if you do accept the application tonight, that point would be moot, because it would be grandfathered under the current regulations. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Point of order? When does the ZBA next meet?
The next ZBA meeting is the 31st of July. I don't think you've got the application in for that, so they would next be, the 28th of August would be the next zoning board meeting.
So why would we be looking to continue the application to August 20th if they're not going to go before the ZBA until the 28th?
It's an option that the board, I've suggested the 20th, Robert suggested the 20th, so that we can get the peer review completed, and that at the very minimum, we have at least enough information to make an informed discussion with any changes that might potentially go to the zoning board. I don't think you'd be in a position to potentially grant approval to the application that night pending the zoning board discussion, but that's a decision the board can make in terms of which meeting you feel is most appropriate.
I mean, if, I don't mean to get into conjecture, but I'm just raising the issue because, first off, I value the applicant's time here, and I don't, I don't want to waste it if they have to go to another body and potentially...
At the time that this memo was written, we did not know if they were going to be able to make it for the July 31st meeting.
So, you know, I, part of me feels that it's slightly premature, because if they, if they go before the, if they go before the ZBA, and let's say that the ZBA makes a decision that is adverse to what you just said, Tim, then we're looking at, looking at going and walking through an exercise where...
Well, they still would be able to go through the process of going under the PUD standards.
But then it becomes a much more onerous process for the applicant, pending if the planning board does it.
In the future, yeah.
In the future, that process, and then that, obviously, it's going to drive a decision as to whether they want, whether they want to go ahead with it, so...
Agreed.
I mean, Mike...
That's certainly a discussion I think we can have with the applicant.
So my question to my colleagues tonight, and again, I say this with all due respect, because fit the phase one at 360 is freaking phenomenal, so I just want to go on record in saying that, but in the same token, you know, I personally feel that we should give the applicant the opportunity to make to the case of the ZBA, so that when they come here to present it in full, they've got their ducks in a row, and we're potentially looking at a completed application. So now we're, and I say this respectfully, we're now looking at September 3?
Yes, that would be the next meeting after that.
Just, Tim, one other thing, I think that we did file the zoning board application today.
If you, I don't know, I haven't seen. If you did provide...
I do have an email saying that that's what we were doing today, so I think we're, we did get it in today.
If the board would indulge for a five-minute recess, I can go down and check to see what's been...
I think that's a great idea, Mr. Chairman.
Please, thank you.
Gentlemen, I really, I don't want to waste your time.
No, we get it, we just thought even, because we were here and because it was set up, and this was a little quirky with the PUD, because we originally, when we submitted, you know, this is kind of like a PUD anyway, because of the residential already existing.
Okay, then, so we have clarification that the, you're on the 31st of July ZBA meeting, so the 20th of...
What date?
August 20th would work. However, given the situation, how much would you like to discuss tonight? Whereas, I think Mr. Boyd made a very valid point about not wasting all your time. On the other hand, we might like to hear a brief outline, so if you want any input from us as to what we've seen already, please feel free to start.
Yeah, I think we would like to start.
Oh, please do, please give your names, and then tell us what you want to tell us.
Rob Barsamian, OVP Management.
Bill Davidson from Hoyle Tanner. Also, Marisa Di Biasso from Hoyle Tanner, we both worked on the design.
Aye, thank you.
Could you, excuse me, but could you repeat your name for the boys in the back room didn't pick it up on the microphone?
Rob Barsamian, OVP Management.
If you want to make sure your mic is on. There you go.
Hello, better? Now you got it. Okay, Rob Barsamian, OVP Management, sorry. So quick overview of Merrimack 360. We are 95% full, triangle credit, a union is, has broken ground, they're doing their grand opening, I think, grand brown, grand groundbreaking on Friday for their internal people. We're really excited about having them along. We were always kind of thinking about a bank there, and so it took us a while, but we were able to make that happen. They'll be open before the end of the year. We have a Thai restaurant that's opening up in August, we're excited about that. It'll be their fifth restaurant, and we're really happy to have them along also, along with the tenants that we have. Everyone's doing quite well in the shopping center, and we have one space left to lease. So a lot of good things going on. We were really supportive with the zoning board on signage, and we were able to really kind of show the center as we wanted to show it with the right signage, with making sure that everyone sees it properly, and so on and so forth, and I think that we're really excited to kind of take this next step and get the bank open and finish the shopping center. So our goal is, before the end of the year, we'll be 100% leased, and everyone will be open, and at some point in the spring of 2020, we'll have a grand opening. Because we kind of piecemeal that, we usually like to do the grand opening when everyone's open, it took us a little longer to finish the leasing, and hopefully we'll get that done by the end of the year, and then we'll have a little celebration about it. So tonight, we had to talk about the apartment complex in the back. You know, we spent a lot of time thinking about, okay, how do we continue to make Merrimack 360 grow? How do we continue to support the retail? Retail is going through a very funny phase. We own a lot of different shopping centers, and I can tell you that it's challenging every day. There's a lot of transition, there's a lot of people closing stores, even national tenants that you think would never go away are going away, so every day's a fight and a challenge. And we have to try to support what we have with every aspect that we can, so whether it's bringing in new tenants, or whether it's trying to support it with other development around it. We thought residential would be a nice component to it. I mean, residential already exists around it, so it's just adding to it, and we were going to do something a little more interesting, do something a little smaller, and so that they can, they can play off each other a little nicer. I think as you see new developments happening in, whether it's in Merrimack or around New England, and really around the country, it's this kind of mixed-use piece that seems to be popular. People want to live where they eat, where they play, make it convenient, make it a little more easier for their lifestyle. So that's what our intention is, and Bill will talk about the plan a little bit, and we'll answer whatever questions you may have.
I'll move over to the, over to the board.
Is this on?
Yes. Yes, I think it is. Yes, I think it is.
Yeah, so this is the project that we're talking for, the apartment building up on the hill. This area right here is the existing retail. So this is in the back of the building. There will be a driveway that comes off this parking lot that comes up the hill and around, and then the three-story apartment building would be in this location here. We have 96 parking spaces. That meets the regulations for the 40 units that we have for the parking spaces. We have fire department access on three sides of the building. The driveway meets the current regulations for grade. It's at 10%. It's a very small section at this point. That's 10%. We have, excuse me, there's a breakout of units. There's 21 bedrooms and 22 bedrooms. That's what you get for the 96 parking spaces. That's what it's based on, or the bedroom count. I think that's pretty much really all that we wanted to talk about tonight for the acceptance to move on. But it's a little bit brief overview, if anybody has any questions.
Well, first of all, I think we should discuss whether we're ready to consider this as a sort of, basically, we can accept this for discussion, because it's critical for deciding whether to accept it or to, if we don't accept it, we've got to go through the vote of agreeing that the current regulations will apply and not any, the future regulations from August the 6th discussion.
Well, we can go ahead and discuss it right now without accepting.
Yes, you can. It's whatever you want to do.
I think we can, right? Why not?
You can, and you could accept it. We're satisfied that there's sufficient information here to meet the threshold for acceptance, given the path that they've chosen to go through.
Yeah. I guess what's the benefit to us or them with that?
It's going to start the 65-day clock for a decision, and it protects them from the changes in the regulations.
Okay. Now, then let's talk about that. If it's, again, the regulations are going to affect them in what way?
I have not determined that because I don't know what you guys are going to adopt yet. But based on the current draft, again, it's primarily going to be drainage, landscaping, and those things. Again, it's, this one has not yet been evaluated by the Public Works Department. However, given the threshold that we typically use for acceptance of plans, I don't know that we could, at least from my professional recommendation, I don't think we could prevent this from being accepted as complete at this point unless there's something that the board has a specific concern about in terms of completeness.
Yeah, my only, my question has to do with accepting a plan that Public Works hasn't seen that it's affected mainly by drainage. And you're saying that drainage, this will affect the drainage, and are we putting the town, like I said on the last thing, are we putting the town at some risk of accepting a plan where we will later have to amend or correct the drainage to conform to?
To my knowledge, no, but I do not have a specific answer to that tonight.
So you don't have the answer?
Correct.
Okay, that's why I'm reluctant to accept it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so you don't want to accept it?
That's correct.
All right. I only have a couple of immediate questions, which I wanted to ask anyway, and I'll ask them. I'm guessing that you've talked to the Department of Transport, and you know about the traffic widening of, route, whatever it is, Daniel, the turnpike, the turnpike's accepted. And the other thing, which I was disappointed not to see, and would be something, it can come after acceptance as far as I'm concerned, I am concerned about the traffic situation on the Route Daniel Webster Highway there, particularly with the increasing traffic coming through that traffic light. I'm a little concerned about that, and I hope you would be able to later give us some comfort, or you'll provide us with some information that indicates you've thought about it. Certainly, those are the two considerations. I mean, I love what you've done so far, and I do understand, and certainly if you listen to the governor today, he wants to encourage the sort of housing that you're proposing to encourage young people to stay in New Hampshire. But I do worry about overloading Daniel Webster Highway, particularly as I'm not sure when the D O T is actually going to get around to widening the turnpike, but that's, we'll have to live with it when they do it, I suppose. Anyway, that's my first comment. Mr. Boyd?
Just, thank you. Just to dovetail off of Alastair's comments, the council had an issue, I want to say two or three months ago, where residents on Island Drive looked to have a stop sign put up, which, and Island Drive is right across the street from where Merrimack 360 is, and the council decided not to go ahead with the stop sign. But at that particular point in time, it absolutely raised the concern that that particular location is going to begin to see an influx of traffic going northbound and southbound. And like what Alastair said, my concern is that the, you know, the 96 additional parking spaces, that's 96 cars that were pointing through that particular intersection in approximation to the neighbors that live on Island Drive in relation to the condominium that's adjacent to you right now. That is just a ton of traffic that is using a road that, quite honestly, is, am I being generous, Tim, by saying barely meeting, it's barely wide enough at that area to?
I'm not comfortable with making a characterization at this point.
Fair enough, fair enough. I don't mean to put you on the spot. I apologize. But what I would say is, is that, you know, we've, we've got issues at that particular location that I'm looking at your project in a positive light, that there's a, there's a unique opportunity to take a murky problem and clear it up and bring these specific problems light, and maybe actually fix the problem in the process at the same time. So I'm actually going to be very, like Alastair, curious to know how you folks are going to address the traffic issues coming in and out of that particular location because, you know, that is a one-way-in, one-way-out location. Yes, you've got a light cycle there, but you've also got the traffic southerly by the condominium, the Monroe Muffel Shop, King Kong, which is busy from Memorial Day through Labor Day. It's just absolutely chaotic at that particular location. So that primarily is one of the, I, some small things, I'll wait till the 20th to talk up about some of the smaller things. But to me, that's the larger piece that I really would encourage you folks to address as we proceed forward, hearing your presentation with the project. A couple of things. I can address some of it now if you want me to, or I can wait. Sure, please. You know, I think one of the things that we're waiting for really, and more of a timing issue, is just the peer review, because I think there'll be a variety of things we have to kind of look at and study and respond to. You know, traffic, just something to think about. When this was originally permitted before us, it was a supermarket. There was a lot of improvements done to that intersection, probably as much as you could possibly do. It is a signalized intersection. And so the southbound one-way entrance that gets half, half, I guess, two points I want to make. All of the potential traffic improvements that could come out of the, a traffic study is already kind of present on the intersection. So the original development, when it was a supermarket, and it was a bank, and it was restaurants, the traffic was designed for a much heavier traffic count than we have today. And when we looked at our development, we knew we were going a little more service-driven and a little more food-driven than what was presently there. And so when we studied the traffic, we talked about parking originally when we first got our approval, we looked at how that intersection was developed originally, and there's not a lot more that can be done to that particular intersection because it already is signalized, going both ways, and we can manage the traffic pretty well. I mean, I've studied it, and I've sat there over and over again. There's not a huge coming in and out of, there's a lot of traffic on Daniel Webster Highway during periods of time at night in particular. Not necessarily coming in and out of our project at those peak periods of time.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
The, you know, there's always going to be that extension of traffic that our project can't help, right, whether, whether it's further down the road. I mean, that's the kind of overall big-picture development, I think, that everyone has to look at, especially in the community. How do you deal with traffic on that turn? How do you deal with the traffic as it goes down to the ice cream shop? How do you deal with it even a little bit further? How do you make it safe? And I think one of the things that we have been looking at, not necessarily traffic, but more pedestrian, you know, how do we deal with pedestrian people now that it's residential, now that there's restaurants, et cetera? Do we, and we're all for looking at those opportunities, you know? I know that the board was pushing sidewalks, for example, right? Big issue. Crossing, how do you cross? How do you cross at the light? So I'm going to address the traffic as a whole, the pedestrian piece of it. How do you get from one place to another? I think after we go through the peer review, just to see what kind of input they're going to have, and if there's something we can do to mitigate that even more than it already is. With regards to our intersection, I think you'll find that because the northbound traffic has a turning lane, because we have a light, because it's signalized, because it's wider, there's not a lot more we can do there. So we're sensitive to it, traffic and how you get in and out of a project is kind of like our breadwinner, right? Because that's how we attract tenants.
Nelson, at one particular point, back when you first were presenting the first phase, so a unique opportunity, and if I'm stealing your thunder, Nelson, I apologize, but the whole pedestrian piece, that internal pedestrian piece, and actually linking the condominium complex on the southerly side with, with the retail, with the retail component now, this proposed project, I think, and I know you alluded to it, so I'd be, I'm going to be enthralled to see what you're bringing as it relates to that, that internal pedestrian linkage piece. So, thank you for amplifying that.
And Public Works at this stage is going to be asking for a sidewalk along the frontage as well. They're going to be strongly recommending that.
Yeah, well, I wanted to speak to sidewalks, of course.
Yes.
And encouraged and pleased to hear that you're considering it too, and that you recognize the need for it in a place like this where there is so much residential adjacent to food service and that sort of thing. So I applaud that and encourage continued looking in that direction.
Yeah, I think what we don't want, we don't want the sidewalk to nowhere, right? So we want to, we want to make sure that it's thoughtful. Is there, you know, and I talked to Tim about this also, you know, you know, we're open to ideas about how we make sure the pedestrians are safe and we're able to make them move around better. But we don't want to just put a sidewalk in just to put a sidewalk in. So I think it has to be more of a bigger-picture thought process, and, and so, you know, we'll address it as we go along during this process. We'll talk about that. And it's not really for the apartment complex because we only have 40 units, and it's not very big as far as an apartment complex is concerned. And the traffic isn't overwhelming as far as an apartment complex is concerned, and probably less than what was originally on the site when it first was in its heyday with the supermarket and the C V S and the bank and the restaurant and the health club. You know, so our traffic is probably down, not up, coming out of that development, fully, fully occupied.
I can take the point you're making. So certainly, there is a possible, but it doesn't change the fact that between 4:30 and 6:30, it's a bit, it's a bit sticky down that road.
Right, right, yeah.
Anyway, but I think it's a good point. Nelson, please.
Okay, I'd like to continue with one other concern that I have in connecting the sidewalk to the shopping, the 360 Plaza. The way the road is laid out is of concern to me. You're coming in on, I guess it's called Eastridge Road or something, coming off of Route 3, you're onto Eastridge Road, and then you have to navigate an automobile through a parking area, which, and you're going to be navigating pedestrians through that parking area to get to the proposed development up on the hill. So I'm concerned about that. I'm going to want a good look at that by the peer review and see if there isn't.
As I understand it, there may be some fire department comments coming regarding that as well.
Well, that's good, and we'll listen to them too. But my concern is, is safety of personnel walking through a parking lot to get to their favorite restaurant down the road.
Right. And it's a concern of ours, too. So we, again, we'll address that. We think we have some good options to keep it safer than it shows on the plan, and I'm sure we'll be getting a variety of comments from the peer review on, on that issue. So we're prepared to look at that a little harder also.
Okay, I'll be watching.
After all, dead, dead pedestrians are no use to your shopping area.
If I could, if I could circle back to Nelson's question on the, on drainage, because you did have some concerns about that when we were talking about the acceptance, and I think, I think I talked to Rob earlier that the check has been cut for the engineering, so the engineering review has started and everything. Okay. So on the drainage, I'm pretty sure everybody's aware, but there's really good, good soils on this, on this property. And we also, this project is required to go through an alteration of terrain process through New Hampshire D E S as well. So there's going to be other folks, we're going to have the peer review, as well as the state looking at the, at the drainage. And to be honest, I don't know what the proposed changes are coming up to the?
Think one in very light.
Yeah. So I think, I think we should be, I would be very surprised if they're in excess of where, where we are with the drainage on that.
Good. That's, that's good news. I hope it comes out that way.
I have, I have confidence in his firm that regardless, that it would be something that would be working, new regulations or not.
I didn't want the town to get stuck with.
Nor do I.
You know, with something that we've allowed to be built by old regulations, and now there's new state and federal regulations, which is where these are coming from, to do something different that the town would be liable for. That's my concern.
I understand.
Okay, well, we've got two choices. We either accept it as it is, the clock starts, and they are subjected to the current regulations, or we accept the recommendation from Mr. Thompson, that we say that we will apply the current regulations to them when they bring their plan back to us after the Z B A meeting. I leave it to you, gentlemen, to either decide which way you want to go and make somebody to make a motion. You can make a motion on one or the other.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the clock starts, acceptance occurs on August, potentially occurs on August 20th. So I would, so my motion is to not accept the plan.
Are you making a motion?
Do you want to make that motion?
Okay, what motion do I want to make, Tim?
Start this whole thing over? If you're not looking to accept the plan?
I want, I still, I don't want the clock to start for them, is what I'm trying to do.
But are you saying that you will accept this plan is covered by the existing regulations? Or that, are you saying there should be subject?
If you're not going to make a motion on acceptance, I'm going to ask you to make a motion on the applicability of the regulations. If you accept it, the question of new regulations versus old regulations is moot.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the plan. It's suitable to make an inform, for the planning board, to make an informed decision and accept jurisdiction.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second to motion.
Right, the motion has a second. Does anybody want to raise any further comments?
Yes, I disagree. I will vote against this motion.
All right. Okay, well, I'll call the question. All in favor of acceptance, say aye. Aye. Those against, no, so it's 3-1-0, Ziner. So the plan is accepted.
Right.
We know you're going before the zoning board on the somethingest of, of July. We look forward to seeing you on August 20th with all these.
Need a motion to?
Oh, yeah, we got to make a motion to continue it. Yes, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, move, move the application to August 20th.
At 7:00 P M.
At 7:00 P M. With no further, with no further notice.
Second to motion.
Okay, that motion is also proposed and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This time it's 4-0-0, Ziner. Okay, you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to seeing everything. We, as it's not been going into detail, that there's no public hearing at this stage. You'll be very welcome to attend the hearing on the 20th. We're not dealing with any public input at this stage. We haven't got enough to go on for you to make sensible comments. We're not being disrespectful, but we need to see the whole plan. You need to see the whole plan, and then you come, please come on the 20th and give us your answers.
Just a question. Because we got notification four days before the July 1, will we be, will all the others be getting notification?
The notification tonight is verbal, that the meeting will be at 7:00 P M. on August 20th. There is no further mailed notice at this stage.
But there will be notices in, in the usual town places.
The agenda will be posted a couple of weeks in advance of the meeting, so you know where it is on the agenda.
And the same goes for the Z B A meeting. If you see, feel the need to go to the Z B A meeting on the?
There will be written notice for the Z B A meeting on the 31st.
This is informal, I apologize. We received our, we did not get proper notice of the 2nd of July meeting. It was mailed to us. Some of us got it on the 1st of July. It was mailed four days before the 2nd of July meeting, which continuance was going to be granted, but the meeting was held, and we didn't get proper notice. So, proper notice to people who got something on the 2nd of July, thought the meeting was held, was not aware of anything else. I don't believe the abutters would give them the proper chance. This may be the greatest project that's ever given.
I can assure you that the abutters' notice were mailed per the statute. When they get delivered by the post office, I can't tell you, but I can tell they were post, they were mailed in accordance with the statute by my office.
Same, all right. I would check it up, because it should not take, the notice from the post office is dated the 29th of June.
Yeah.
I can assure you it met the statutory requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, for conducting that item on our agenda. The next item on our agenda is discussion, possible action regarding other items of And the item of concern that's listed for us is the consideration of the performance bond for Neighbor Works on Angelo Drive. I have a memo from Robert Price to the planning board indicating that the road bond estimate form has been received for the right-of-way improvements on Angelo Lane required as part of the Neighbor Works multi-family residential site plan. The estimate forms were completed by Meridian Land Services. The quantity was taken from the approved Neighbor Works site plan dated June 26, 2018, and last revised May 15, 2019. The total amount of the performance bond for Angelo Lane is $91,545.43. Staff is requesting the planning board vote to establish a performance bond in that amount. Public Works Department has reviewed the bond estimate form and determined that the listed costs are sufficient to complete the improvements noted in the approved plan set. Building permits for the project cannot be issued until the bond is received. What is the will of the board with respect to establishing a performance bond for Angelo Lane in the amount of $91,545.43?
Move approval.
Moved by Counselor Boyd. Is there a second?
Not secondly, I have a question.
I'll second it for the purposes of the vote.
Alistair seconds. Nelson, what's your question?
My question is, when I looked over the bond estimate, which was attached to this, I did not, I saw two things that caught my eye. One, I did not see any provision for a sidewalk, and as I remembered, there was a sidewalk that ran up Angelo Drive to Route 3, and that's, it's not in there, huh?
That is, that was not part of the approved plan. There was a waiver granted for the sidewalk, that I recall.
Oh, yeah? I didn't remember that. I also didn't remember that there was a traffic light involved here. Where is the traffic light?
It's, I think, Nelson, it's, if you look at the thing, it's the standard form, and if you look at traffic signals, it says zero.
Zero.
So, it means they're not putting one in.
It says 15, oh, okay, I read the $1,500, and I thought, okay, I see what you mean. Okay, but I did think there was a sidewalk. I didn't remember that we didn't do a sidewalk there. I thought we ran the sidewalk off of Route 3.
There is a sidewalk, sorry, Nelson. If you look at page two, two-thirds of the way down, it says sidewalk including 12 inches of crushed gravel base, 2 inches of bitumen, and 6 inches of concrete, and there's an estimate of $8,625,1400. It's there.
I don't, how far down in the list is it?
Two-thirds the way down. Go find traffic signals.
Right under streetlight LED.
Traffic signals, streetlight LED, sidewalk.
Okay, sidewalk. For $12, oh, that's a unit cost, $690.
$690 linear feet.
Okay, $8,000. I, my apologies, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, I read this too quickly.
Nelson, no worry.
I'm okay with this.
Thank you for the comments on these and the questions. Any other discussion regarding the performance bond? If not, is there a motion?
They already had that.
There's not a motion.
I'm sorry. Your right to do. Motion and seconded to approve the performance bond at $91,545.43. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to approve the performance bond.
Mr. Chairman, the back page.
All right. Is there any other items of concern?
I don't know if you want the other... Not from anybody else.
If there are no other items of concern, the last item on our agenda is the consideration of a set of minutes from July 2nd, 2019. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes with one very slight typo, which I noticed on page 6, line 21, says the vote, the board voted 4-0-0 to grant a final approval. I think the a is surplus to requirements.
Grant final approval, is that conditional final approval? Is that what that's supposed to be?
It should be conditional, yes.
So, it should say that. Is there a second for Alistair's motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'm sorry, Nelson, did you second?
Yes, that's what I was trying to do.
Okay, so Nelson's second. Ziner's offered some clarification on what should be there. Are we straight on what it should be? Okay. Any further discussion on the minutes? Pass that down to Tim.
Yes, I will do that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to approve the minutes. There being no further business before the board, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
So, I'm of...
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to adjourn. Thank you very much for the work tonight. Gentlemen, don't forget to turn your microphones off.